landscaping we considered Main Street to be the front, if you will. And this is a section of the ordinance we just reviewed in great detail and revised fairly recently. So, the zoning ordinance requires that parking lots that abut or face a public street are required to have French landscaping between the parking area and street right of way. At least one tree per each thirty feet. So that would mean that along Main Street they're required to have twelve trees and thirty-four shrubs, then have an additional twenty-four trees along West and Center Streets, and then have an additional twelve trees on sort of interior portion of the parking lot. As proposed now, they've got eight trees and thirty-two shrubs along Main Street, seventeen trees along West and Center Streets, and no trees that are interior to the parking lot itself. So they're efficient in most of the landscaping requirements. There is some language built into the zoning ordinance that allows planning permission to exercise some discretion and some flexibility there. You know, most of the vegetative screens along West and Center Streets are proposed to stay. Zoning ordinance also requires that non-residential uses that are abutting a residential district or use needs to provide and maintain a wall or privacy fence of some sort or a landscape upper verm or something like that that's composed of evergreen trees. So they have proposed that some additional evergreen trees. On the south side of the property, there's the deciduous trees, and they're going to preserve the existing pre-owned that we talked about, and there's a privacy fence along one of those properties that's also proposed to be preserved. So, again, you know, one of the major concerns I had with the site in general was I didn't want it to be completely just devoid of landscaping entirely. I understand that it's, especially because most of the cars that park in that are staying put all of the time, that, you know, snow removal and some of that can be pretty challenging in the winter time, so I don't have a big problem with them not having a lot of the interior trees and stuff like that. I think they've done a pretty good job overall of adding landscaping along Main Street and on the two side streets. One of the biggest concerns I had was along Main Street, the setbacks and that there's no landscaping, the sidewalk areas, just, I think it's just terrible right now. It's hard to get by sometimes, the vehicles. You know, when they're parked, can kind of bump up into the pedestrian area along Main Street, they've proposed to take care of all of that. All of that, there's an additional ten-foot setback built in between the parking lot and the sidewalk, and then there's the sidewalk which runs up to the curb around Main Street. So I think they've made a lot of improvements in that regard. That was a major concern I had with the site in general. So I think as long as, as long as they've preserved or have proposed to add to that landscaping along the southern side of the site where it's adjacent to those residential homes, I'm pretty comfortable with the rest of it. So, that's my opinion, obviously you can take it or not, but that's something I think needs some discussion.
Um, I guess I'll lead that off. The back fence, it looks like it's in pretty bad state of repair. I mean, it kind of looked like it was leaning in some sections and going the other way and other side. It did not look good, to say the least. And it doesn't go, as an example, across Kelly and Mike's house at all. It stops right there on the corner, I think, of your property, if I'm not mistaken, or pretty close to that.
The back fences actually are fence on our property, and it's in bad repair because of the snow being pushed against it.
Right, right. So the object, I think, would be, my recommendation, at least at this point, would be to have that fence go across from West Street all the way over to Center Street, and in fact, go towards Main Street on Center Street there. And I think there's a, Marty, what'd you call that, a knockout out in the street there?
Yeah, you're proposing a saw cut right there on the, on Center Street?
Um, that's for the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
Okay. So leading, coming around that corner, because right down there, and there's just nothing there. And it seems to me as though that coming all the way across with the fence and then going to the right, going down West Street, there's not much there currently. There's hardly anything there. I mean, it's businesses. But coming down Center Street until you get to your new opening there, there's houses on the other, you know, on the other side of the street, as we heard in the letter tonight. And I'm thinking that fence along that way, and Kelly had a good point, if you put the fence, I guess, behind the trees, I don't know. I mean, that, that, I, that's something that has to be determined, I'm sure. But the object would be, and the more trees you can plant back there, obviously, the better. And you have, you have quite a few back there. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, devoid.
There are existing trees on Center Street that are going to be maintained.
Yes, yes, but they, they only come, they don't come to that corner.
Right.
They, they come, you know, fifty foot short. So you've got that whole corner there, in essence, that is bigger. And I think that would also help with the lighting and, you know, just the general sound and just buffering. That's, that's why we put that in there, to protect the neighbors and, you know, actually protect your property too, I guess, from that standpoint, so. That would be my recommendation. And I think it would add to your total sphere of trees and, you know, round it all the way around. I don't know about West Street. Frankly, it's, there's an empty lot that's for sale over there, and then there's a business on the corner, and that appears to be about it. But if that fence was maybe just a whole new fence, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the total real condition of the fence. I just, when I drove by, I looked down there and, you know, it kind of looked quite a drunk looking down line. I mean, it just didn't look that, so.
Yeah, I'm really not a hundred percent sure Bruce fence is used.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah. But that, that's my point.
The next site plan item is signage. This one is also a little bit interesting, so they've proposed, I mean, typically when there's, you know, one building, there's one sign per building. Fifty square feet is, is the maximum they can do. This, this facility is a little bit different in that they have, it's, it's a very large building in the mayhem, and then within the building, there's these, what they call salons, which is an area that's primarily dedicated to one specific type of vehicle. So they have one specific part of the building that's only going to be for Jeeps, and one that's only going to be for Chrysler, one that's only going to be for Dodge, one's only going to be for Ram. And so, and then there's the, there's additional part of the building that's only going to be for the service garage. So what they've proposed is that, you know, is that we consider this like a multi-brand business. So typically, if there's a business, like a strip mall or something, where it's, where there's one building that's divided up into, into sections that are dedicated to a specific type of business or a specific activity, that we let each one of those frontages have their own fifty-square-foot sign. That's what they have proposed here. A couple of their signs are, are in addition, are in excess of fifty square feet, so those would have to come down to be not more than fifty square feet, but otherwise, we felt that that was an acceptable application here and they have to be approved, subject to your discussion.
Commissioners, anything? My, my father worked for Oldsmobile for forty-four years in advertising, and many of the dealerships had Pontiac and Chevy and Oldsmobile and things of that, especially in smaller towns like Oklahoma, frankly. And, you know, they, they each have to have their signage. Otherwise, why have a brand? And I think that makes a lot of sense. And having a clean sign, keeping it to that fifty square feet per sign, I think will, will work very nicely for you guys. My, my question, my concern is what happens if a brand goes out like Oldsmobile? And just, I mean, you know, it seems to me, I don't know if that's a condition that we put in here, that the sign has to come down, or, I really don't know at that point. There's got to be, there's got to be a way around that. And the other question I have, as long as I'm there, is where is going to be the service? Where's the entrance to a service? If I come there to have a car service, do I come in off of Center, off of Main? What's the, what's the vision there, I guess?
The entrance to the service is right on the north side, on east side of the building, but it's on the north side of the building. So you can really come from...
Either Main Street or Center Street, correct? Either way, okay, thank you.
And, yeah, the signage, the multi-tenant approach to that, done that in several other municipalities, Grand Rapids, Grand Haven, Muskegon, have looked at it at the same time, so I'm pretty confident.
Okay. Anybody else?
Again, the engine ones you had concerned about on the signs was probably the Vatican pre-owned and the service.
Yeah, I think there were two of them that were sixty-some square feet, and so, talk with Mike, just how you think those can come down to fifty. And that's what, that's what the ordinance requires for, basically any wall sign in any district, pretty much, it's fifty square feet.
Luckily those we have some leeway on, because they're not the, the brand signs stipulated from the name factor, so.
Exactly.
Play with those.
Those you can, right, okay.
Yeah. So the next section of the ordinance, I don't know, Bruce, do you want to walk through each of the site plan review standards one at a time, and then after that, we still have the same special land use standards to go through one at a time?
Let's go, let's...
Or do you want to just talk about the site plan?
Let's take the site plan review standards, and then we'll take those one at a time.
So this is section eighteen oh six of the zoning ordinance related to site plan review, and there are several, half a dozen or so, standards for review for site plans. And then subsequent to that, we'll get to the specific special land use standards. So there's, there's a number of sections of the zoning ordinance in play here. So section eighteen oh six A states that the uses proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. Uses and structures located on the site shall be planned to take into account the product fee size of the property, uses on adjoining property, and relationship and size of buildings to the site. The site shall be developed so as to not compete normally in orderly flow or development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the ordinance. As an overall site design exercise, I think this is an improvement over the, over the site as it is now. They're taking multiple buildings consolidated into one building that'll look better. I think the site will generally flow better. There's, you know, there's a much more well-filled parking area, location of the service doors, the entrance, all that stuff seems to be improved over the previous application. You know, subject to, you know, some of the changes, I think, that we've been talking about to sort of address some of the concerns we've heard from the neighbors, I think that's a, a standard that could be or would be satisfied.
I'm in complete agreement. I, I think the plan itself, the basic plan, is a huge improvement on the property, and I think taking the neighbors' concerns in, you know, especially the noise. I mean, I, I agree with both the letter and Kelly's statement there, that, you know, the noise level on some of those things in today's age can be fixed relatively easily. And it seems to me as though the rest of the, the overall plan, though, is certainly going to be an improvement on the, on the looks of it. I think, frankly, from the ease and actually safety for members of the public driving in, the flow was better than what it was. Getting on and off streets should be better. Where the entrance ways are, having recognizable entrance ways instead of, you know, a cut here and a cut there, I think will make a much better solution to it. And I think one of the things that we have to look at is, is the parking situation on both Center and West, and that's a city function, I would say. I mean, they're the ones that will have to say, no parking, you know, in these areas, or parking on one side of the street, or whatever it is. But those are something that the city can actually look at and take, take action with.
Yeah, I mean, there shouldn't be any, any, I mean, when we're talking about parking down the street, that's city property.
Exactly.
They shouldn't be parked there in general on this because the site's going to be totally redesigned.
Exactly.
There should be a playground for all that, so that's not necessarily a planning thing, but it's some sort of thing about it. The city should take that.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is, is I think some of those concerns, though, from the citizens would be addressed, as far as I'm concerned. Anybody else, Commissioners? All in favor, then, of accepting the standard A as, as proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
May I have a couple more comments?
Um, let's do it at the end of the standards, please.
Eighteen oh six B states that safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined vehicular pedestrian circulation shall be provided according to S E points in within the site. Drive streets and other circulation routes shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations within the site and at ingress and egress points. On this site, there's three defined points off Main, West, and, and Center Street, and as you just kind of stated, Bruce, you know, right now, access to the site's not, you know, it's not really well-defined, there was a bunch of different curbscoves, it's kind of hard to tell where the best spot is, is to get in and out, so I think that's improvement. I can't talk about the sidewalk already, I think that's a huge improvement along Main Street specifically. So, what, another one of the standards that we were looking at, and we'll talk about it more later, is the actual locations of the, of the driveways. Those need to be at least fifty feet off of, you know, from the nearest intersection. They've satisfied that. Could they push them farther south? Yeah, probably, but we also want to try to avoid having additional traffic, you know, nearing the residential homes in the south. And the overall circulation of the site, I think, is better with, with the locations of the driveways and their, and their present configuration as proposed. So, in my view, that standard is also satisfied. You guys agree?
Commissioners, anything on, any discussion on B? All in favor of accepting the review standard B, please say aye.
Aye.
Item C states that the arrangement of public or private vehicular pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide for a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic from the city of Lowell. You know, again, I think the curbscoves are in a, a good enough spot. You know, ideally, they would be a little bit farther south, but that's not really feasible considering where they have to put the building, and they're, they're well beyond the fifty feet requirement that's in the, in the zoning ordinance. So I think the vehicular circulation connection and pattern is good. Again, the pedestrian connections and sidewalks, specifically along Main Street, is going to be a massive improvement, so. I, you know, assuming that the, to this, I don't know if M.D.'s going to have to approve the one on Main Street, but it's subject to the approval from the city, and possibly M.D., you know, would think that that standard is also satisfying.
Commissioners, standard C, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it? Please say aye.
Aye.
It is accepted. And B?
Item D, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site according to the requirements of this ordinance. Planning Commission requires an approved landscaping buffers in their green belts shall be continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public and private property. Generally speaking, this standard doesn't apply because the site's developed already. We do note that they are proposing to preserve most of the, of the trees and other plantings along the south side of the property. Landscaping overall is going to be an improvement, I think, over the, over the current site as well, so, in my view, the standard is satisfied. We can add a condition of approval that talks about, you know, perpetual maintenance of the, of the landscape areas as well, but that's, that's something that's an expectation. We hadn't had that in the ordinance as well. So if for some reason they didn't maintain it, or they didn't install that landscaping or something like that, it would be a violation of the zoning ordinance, and we have a mechanism to deal with that.
Okay, that's good, because that also would address the snow and that tree issue and things of that nature. I mean, that's, obviously, we've got to, got to have a plan to do that, and consequently, it's, it is Michigan. I mean, you know, we get salt and everything else out here, so it's, it's part of the process of making sure that the continuation of those trees and their growth and all of that continues, so, you know. Commissioners, anything on D?
Would this be the continuous maintenance of the landscaping with that line of fence that we were discussing?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
If it was theirs?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
If it's theirs?
Yeah, if it was...
If it's adjacent property owner?
If it's an adjacent property owner, then, then they, that's a different problem. We have to address it with that property owner. But they still, I'm still recommending that they put up a fence. If, you know, if the existing fence is theirs and it works, that's fine, that's one thing, but I'm still recommending that we have that fence all the way across, because, and going around that corner there. I don't think that's unreasonable, and it certainly separates the residential people from it. And regardless, if the fence is somebody else's, then we still need to address that, so, or the city does, not us. That's, that's something that can be found out easily. With the exception of that, everybody okay on D? Will you say aye?
Aye.
Item E says satisfactory assurance shall be provided if the requirements of all other applicable ordinance's codes and requirements of the city of Lowell will be met. Again, at this point, the, you know, the applicant in general, I think, has been, you know, very, you know, cooperative, and they've worked with us pretty well on talking about what the zoning ordinance requires, so we don't, I don't have any, any concerns or any reason to think that they're knocking on hollow walls, required codes and premises and stuff. And there's licenses associated with being a vehicle dealer, building permits and all that kind of stuff. The DVWs had some, you know, has had a look at this, our, our engineering staff took a look at the site plan as well, so I think that standard is satisfied.
Commissioners, E? And it is part of the condition of approval as we get down to that, too, so I would agree. Everybody in agreement? Okay.
Last item for site plan review, item F, the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan of the city of Lowell shall be maintained. You know, the overall purpose of the ordinance is, is kind of a lengthy description that talks about, you know, land situated in appropriate locations and relationships, limit overcrowding of land, facilitate adequate provisions of transportation, sewer, water, energy, and so on and so forth. You know, the way that I sort of interpreted this standard is that this is a pretty significant improvement over the current site. So, in that vein, I think that it's, that it meets that criteria. It's, it's a major improvement, it's, it improves the pedestrian circulation, it improves the vehicle circulation. The overall appearance of the site as far as landscaping and all of that stuff is going to be, I think, a lot better than it is now. There might be some operational issues that we can deal with when we get to that point of our report here, talking about the, the special land use, but as a, as a site planning exercise, I think this is a pretty good improvement over what's there now.
Commissioners, any discussion? All in favor of F, please say aye.
Aye.
That brings us to the site plan review standards through it. Kelly, you want to do, address this, or did we address your concern?
I have one question. You said two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces were going to be there. What is it currently?
I, I don't know, two hundred and...
Um...
I think, I know that, based on the lot coverage, because we're a little bit less than existing, there's probably less parking spaces than there are right now, because the spurt footage of the building is more than the three buildings combined. So just in general, there's probably going to be less parking right now, or less parking with the new layout and system.
Okay. You addressed the lights on the side, but there's quite a bit of light in the back of our house, too. And we've talked a little bit about fencing and trees. There are some evergreen trees that grow very quickly. I wouldn't be opposed if you planted the trees and put a tree behind there, all along our yard to give us barrier with the fencing behind it. I think that would certainly make a big difference.
I think when we get into the site plan, there are a lot of those trees proposed.
Yeah, there are.
I saw the plans, and they're spaced out. I'm talking about a wall. On the other side, where the house is on West Street, if you look at that house, they have that. They have very huge evergreen trees and then a fence.
I'm not familiar with that, I guess. I, when I was over on West Street, I didn't notice a lot of, you know, really good vegetation over there, so.
Okay, there's a...
Right by your house, there's a whole string of, of trees right there.
Mm-hmm.
Right at your driveway, or at your garage.
Our house, and then the back of our house.
Right.
And then this is the car dealership parking lot. Right here, there's a yellow house, and they have very tall, probably twenty to thirty feet, evergreen trees and a fence as a barrier.
Correct me, Michael, if I'm wrong here, but I, you're not proposing turning down any trees anyway at this point.
No. What I'm suggesting is similar to that along our lines, so that we can have a barrier as well.
Okay.
And then the other thing that I forgot to mention was trash removal. There are dumpsters, and they are currently away from our house. They are more towards the front of the property, and with the building coming this way, I want to know where you're going to put those. I do not want them close to our property or our house, and the trash removal is very noisy, and it's more than once we, and so that is also a concern. And then the other concern that I have is, with all of these concerns, I think our house is the one that's going to be the most affected. Everyone would like some talks with us and maybe a win-win solution before construction begins. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Now we go on to the special land use standards.
Yes. These are the same standards that we applied to the previous application for the residential dwellings on Main Street here, so. First one, this is section seventeen oh three, there are six standards the planning commission must utilize in reviewing the special land use application. First one is that the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained, but it to be harmonious and appropriate, and parents with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity of the area, and that such use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. If you overlook the building and all of that stuff, I, I think it's okay. The use itself is the same as it was before. You know, based on some of the public comments tonight, I think there are some operational things we want to talk about, whether it's the P A system and, you know, finding cars with alarms and hours and lighting and things like that, so I think some of that discussion should occur either now or at the end of this review, as a general comment. Otherwise, again, the overall layout is, is an improvement, landscaping is an improvement, but I think there are some operational kinds of things to talk about.
Commissioners, special land use standards, number one. Any thoughts on the, I guess, let's start on the noise issue?
Yeah, no P A.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that, too. No, no P A.
I think going from three buildings to one building, the noise level's going to drop anyway because you're not...
You're not trying to communicate, yeah, yeah. But having said that, there's not a great reason for a P A system as there was twenty years ago, this housing. I mean, there's just no reason for it, frankly, anymore.
Internally, there can be.
Yeah, inside the building, that's, that's totally reasonable. I mean, that's, it's pretty standard for any kind of operation like that. I understand that, but having it go outside, I don't, I don't see any reason for it anymore. And the, the car alarms, there's got to be a better way of doing that.
I mean, don't they know where they park cars?
Right. Right, right. I mean, it can't be any worse than a...
They have a salesman.
Can't be any worse than a parking lot, taking, you know, taking tags and putting them in the windshield or whatever. I mean, it's got to be, there's got to be a way of doing that.
Let me ask a question. Do you, when they're doing the car alarms, is that the service department trying to find the car?
Could be, many people could be customer. Could be we have drivers, which are also community members here that are, don't, you know, want to walk around and look for a car, just like when you go outside Myers, some of our people, how to figure out where they park. And I have, you know, I've only been associated with the site for a little over a year. I have, I have observed a real, big problem with that, but I, I mean, I understand it, but it's generally somebody trying to find a car. I don't think, I don't think it's a daily nuisance, but I'm sure it's happened. You know, many, it could be customers picking their car from service, it could be, you know, a lot of different scenarios.
I guess that's a good point. When, when people come in for service, will they be, after they're serviced, obviously? Do you pull them outside, or do they stay in the service space? Tell me how that kind of works.
The plan will be they be delivered back to the service entrance, where you pick up your car, right at the service entrance.
Which is on the front side of the... So the use of a car alarm in that case would be pretty dumb, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there.
The car would be brought up, and, you know, the customer was there to...
Well, I think, you know, the, the concern was the looking for cars, going out there, a member of the company actually going out there and, you know, setting off a bunch of alarms to pick off three or four cars every day, and it didn't make, doesn't make any sense. I mean, it just doesn't, it's just bad business, I guess. I don't know if we write that, how we write that as a condition, we'll have to think about that one.
Yeah, I don't think you can, for like the use of car alarms on the site, because, I mean, someone's going to, you know, drop their keys or be on accident, or, we've all done that before, right?
Right.
I mean, at the same time, I think we can, it'll be difficult to enforce, but, you know, I'm thinking a general standard that just says that employees can't use, you know, the alarms to, to locate cars, or regular use of car alarms by employees would be disallowed, or something like that.
But if you're going to do that when they're finished with service, and they're bringing the car onto the front of the building, and they're locking it to unlock it...
Well, I mean, more than just the one beep, I think, it's like the, yeah, the panic, panic alarm, not just the unlocking the car.
Right, that's, that's the concern, is that, and that's, seems to be sensible.
You know, one little chirp when you lock your car is every driveway, up and down, every neighborhood in America nowadays, almost, so.
Kelly, let me ask you a quick question. Does this happen at night? I mean, you know, that, you know, people are there after hours...
In the morning, during the day. This isn't people coming to look at cars and trying to find the car so somebody can drop it. This is employees moving cars. It's usually when there's a higher inventory, so right next to our lot is an empty lot, and so they park cars on it during the summertime, and so if they have to mow the lawn, employees will come out and try to find the cars, and they'll do this for an hour or two, so they can move the cars, so they can mow the lawn, and then they go back trying to find the car, and then they move them back.
Again, this is an operational type thing that needs to be addressed somehow.
One thing that, I don't know if you have, it's like, put it up?
I don't, it's on this.
No, I don't think it's on this. I think, well, with a new layout, too, along that south side, you know, back there in the corner by their house, it's typically going to be employee parking.
Right.
So, it won't be car stores anymore, because it's just, not that room in that corner, so it, it's kind of set up right now that we, you know, employee parking.
There will still be noise pollution. I can still hear it on the other side of the lot, and, you know...
Well, it's like the light pollution. I, I'm not sure that we can eliminate it entirely, but what we can do is try to put conditions to dampen it and to be able to work with the neighbors and, and the car dealership. There's got to be, you know, some kind of condition in there addressing, you know, car alarms. I mean, just wanting all of a sudden 20, 30 car alarms going off is, would be mad, and I, you know, I can understand that. On the other hand, you're going to have car alarms go off when you're at a car dealership. So we just need to write something in there about that.
Try to minimize it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay. Tony?
I think if we look at the design, I think the design has taken the sound and the commotion into effect for those houses. The building is going to be a great shield for the commotion, and just looking at it holistically from above there, the building is going to be a great sound barrier, and the activity is going to be on the other side of the building away from the houses, which is going to help the sound and the commotion, I think, we're, we're talking about.
Right. Okay, everybody, any other discussion on one for special land use standards? All in favor of accepting it as is, please say aye, or with those two conditions, the no PA and the car alarms? And those are the conditions that we're laying.
Yeah, so I'm thinking we'll just have one, one condition that states that there's no outside PA system, and then another condition that says that the use of car alarm Japan funds by employees on a regular basis is prohibited.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. So, special land use standards, one, any other discussion with those two conditions in mind? Please say aye, if you accept it?
Aye.
Impose? It's accepted. Number two?
Number two, the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the city of Lowell master plan. Master plan, this is in the highway business planning designation. You have the appropriate definitions, talk about retail office and services that are oriented towards automobile traffic, so this kind of fits right in with all of that. So in, in general, I think this is consistent with the Lowell master plan.
Number two, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item three, the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire protection, drainage structures, peruse disposal, water and sewage facilities. Similar to the previous application, we'll go through the same process, so all of the city departments will get a copy of the site plan, I'll sign off on it, work in the street for the water, so we will be coordinated with the DVW. Fire departments will get to see it, and not permit if necessary. It's, I mean, it's served, I think, adequately by all of those things, there's water and sewer services available at, at the site. There's, you know, streets on three sides of this, the transportation side issue, the, the pedestrian connections are vastly improved, so I, I do think that it satisfies that standard.
Commissioners, any discussion? All in favor of the number three special land use standard, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It is accepted.
Item four, the proposed special land use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. This is the same use as it was before, open air business, vehicle dealership. You know, there, I, I don't, I don't think there are going to be any excessive requirements for public services, especially not beyond what's there presently. I mean, this is probably going to be a more secure site that's, you know, going to be built to the most recent building, to those vehicles, et cetera, so there's always some risk with, with, with everything, like there is with every application, but, you know, I don't think that there's going to be excessive additional requirements for public facilities and services.
Thanks. Number four, any, any discussion? All in favor of the special land use standard, number four, please say aye?
Aye.
Standard is accepted.
Item five, the proposed special land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. You know, we do have some concerns here, obviously, we've been talking about it a bit tonight, whether it's noise from tools on the site, lights, which we've talked about, some of that stuff I think can be mitigated through landscaping and, you know, roofs you're kicking around, some additional fencing or, or something tonight, so I think, you know, this would probably be an appropriate time to, you know, I don't know if you want to, if you want to...
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put it in here.
Yeah, I mean...
I would recommend that the south side have the six-foot privacy fence on West Street all the way to Center Street, and then going towards Main Street down Center Street to where the tree line meets. It's about 50 foot, I'd say, I'm guessing, but...
Yeah, the only thing I was wondering is if the site ordinance has, would have an issue with the sign being, you know, the property line on Center Street, or how close can it be?
The sign can, I think, be two feet from the tree right away.
Okay.
And you're using the existing sign structure that's there currently.
Oh, that's, sorry, I meant the fence.
Oh, thanks.
I'll have to check, but, yeah, I don't know, I'll tell me that, I'll have to look.
There's, there's, it, it, it's right across from the lady that wrote the letter, and to have that fence there, I think, would give privacy to those few houses across the street particularly, and it would come close to where your existing tree line is there, which is a, a nice tree line. And then to fill in the, the fence, and I don't know if the fence that is existing there is yours or not, I have no clue. I mean, I, you know, I don't know if you, but the, the point is, is I would prefer that I go from west all the way over to center, and then go up. That, that provides that property from people who live there. It, it gives that privacy at least some semblance. If not just sheer looks, I mean, it's, it's going to dampen noise, it's going to dampen a lot of things, and it'll keep, you know, people from just crossing over, you know, just easy to do, park at Center Street, walk in and buy a lot of...
Security, too.
Yeah, I would think it would, and, and you've got the tree, one tree line coming that way, and you've got partial tree line off of Center Street going, going down south there, too, which is, they're nice trees, and if, if that can be, you know, enhanced, I guess, is, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense? That way it kind of ties it all in. And on West Street, I don't see the need to extend any fencing down West Street. You've got bushes and things of that nature, there's no residential across from you, so it, it just creates less of a concern on that street. I, and I'm guessing it's, what, 50 foot on Center Street or something like that? It's not, not very much.
It's...
Yeah, I know, I know, it's, it's, it can't be very much, though. And again, the existing sign, or the existing fence that is there, discovery needs to be done as to who owns it and the condition of it, I guess. I mean, it, it could be fine, I, you know, I just drove by and looked at it from a distance, so, old eyes. So, makes sense? Any other discussion on that? On the noise issue, we've already talked about that, actually, and then the production of traffic with the new, the three new entrance ways there, it seems to me as though that's vastly improved over where it is now.
Yeah, I mean, I'd only anticipated the global traffic generation's going to be significantly changed, I mean, it might go up a little bit, just because it's a new building, but at the same time, there's fewer cars on site, and things like that, and yet, the, the circulation's going to be really better.
Where is dumpster in there?
Uh, I'll have to say, we haven't stipulated that on the site plan. So...
There's a couple of things, as, you know, we haven't dealt with that in discussions. I mean, if you want, you can just have that be something that we review with staff after the fact, if you want some...
I can give them some general direction.
I'm fine with that, though. Again, I would prefer that it not be in that southeast corner. That it be somewhere closer to the building, I guess, and more, more forward. Marty, you got any ideas on that?
Where to put the dumpster?
Yeah.
I think I'd like to see the dumpster somewhere over on West Street, West Avenue.
Yeah.
We got that big lot, Eric Scott has a lot there that's commercial. There's really nothing on that side of the street, and I just think that, but how do, you know, I understand it's going to be kind of difficult to get a beverage truck in and out of there, but...
Well, they've got a new opening right there at West Street, so they should be able to design right off of the opening there.
Well, I just see you've got that in the corner there, on the southwest corner.
I think, one spot that I think would probably work is, we have some electrical transformers too in that area, is the, the southwest corner of the building, but it'll be more adjacent to the building than, you know, the property line of the proposed natural.
Why don't you look at, off of, as Marty said, off of West Street as well? You've got your new opening over there, and if there's an area of possibility over there, that might make some sense, and work it out with staff? You guys okay with that?
You have no fence around it, like, too, like...
Yeah. You've got to enclose it, yeah. Yeah, they've got to enclose it, do all those kinds of things.
It would be a main street enclosure, that, same as the building's main street.
And if the opening can be on Main Street side, that way the noise goes that way instead of the other way, you lack trucks, at least stopping some of it. Not perfect, but...
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And the other ones, lights, we've already talked about, and I, I'm finding with staff dealing the lights...
You give on wall pack on the back of the building, right? And then were you posing any upright lighting across that back south?
I have to look at the site plan, plan, you got here.
Because it, the sight line we got, it doesn't, I understand it's expensive to do these, but... I didn't see it, if I missed it, I apologize, but...
There's, uh, wall packs on the building, there is one full light on the south side.
Okay.
That's right, where those trees are, too.
Okay, and that would be LED, and that would be...
Yeah.
What way is that facing? Is that facing towards our house?
No, it's facing the, the other way. But, see, the, the lighting levels...